Thank you, ma'am. Thank you all for joining us this evening, December the twenty-seventh of the year two thousand and twenty-four. The time is five thirty P. M. Today is a special call meeting called upon by the majority of members of council. This is the second meeting. Mister Steins, can you do a roll call, sir?
Yes, Mister Mayor. Erica Page?
Here.
Donald Brock?
Here.
Rich McKendrick?
Here.
Andrea Fred?
Here.
Mayor Griffin?
Here. Thank you, sir. Was notification and posting of the meeting agenda posted according to state law?
Yes, Mister Mayor.
Thank you, sir. At this time, please join council and Ms. Page. She will lead the pledge of allegiance and the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing. Dear heavenly Father, thank you so much for allowing us to be here this evening. Thank you so much for the birth of your son and this holiday season. Please keep us all warm and let us have a great meeting in regards to this beautiful town that we serve. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, ma'am. Second item on the agenda. It's public hearing. For ordinance two thousand and twenty-four point zero zero nine and ordinance to amend ordinance two thousand and twenty-four point zero zero four, so as to provide for amendments to the revenue and expenditure appropriations of the general fund, state accommodations tax fund, local accommodation tax fund, and hospitality tax fund in the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four through two thousand and twenty-five budget. Mister Steins, I understand you have a presentation for this piece?
Yes, Mister Mayor. I have the items lined out to go through for council's wish.
Yes, sir. Let's proceed with that. Council, if you have any questions on the item, let's stop the administrator in there so we can deal with that item as it's presented. Yes, sir. Please proceed.
We're in the public.
We in the public here.
I would just suggest opening it to anyone from the public and giving just a moment for that.
Yes, sir. No problem?
And move on from that.
No problem. Let's back up. So we're in the public hearing. This is open to the general public. So if anyone of the general public wants to speak now or at item four for the open citizens comment, but you can speak specifically to this item of the budget at this time.
And there were no signups, Mister Mayor.
No signup. Okay. Thank you, sir. All right. We will close the public hearing. Hearing none. We'll move to the action item as presented for the second reading of the same ordinance. Mister Steins?
Yes, Mister Mayor. Thank you and thank you, members of council. From the last meeting, we recap just pretty much what we did in the same process. So this is the second reading of the proposed budget amendment. There are a few line item adjustments that are specific more in the salary and for both the manor positions and the administrative positions. So in your packets, I've re-outlined all of the respective adjustments and then added the new numbers to them. So one of the changes will be, if you'll note, positions are now labeled with the requested numericals of one, two, three, four to outline the different positions that are currently in the budget. The overall budget is amended to three thirty-five for the administration positions. And on the notes section, you'll see where I've just noted that there are four removed positions. And then there are the positions that remain that were part of town hall prior to last year's budget process. Moving on to the next, these are just the retirement and the health insurance line items. Those numbers stayed relatively the same. I have the adopted numbers lined out and I have the amended numbers lined out. So for the retirement, the adopted was one oh four, six fifty-four. The amended would be reduced to fifty-seven, eight seven seven. For insurance, there would be a reduction there as well from sixty-four, seven, three, seven to four, eight, five, sixteen. Moving on to legal and professional, the codifications, ordinance complications. This number did not change from the first reading. It is still requesting increase for two thousand to make it an amended amount for five thousand. The I T support remained the same. This is a one-time increase for the nineteen-two, making it an amended eighty-nine, two hundred. Next fiscal year, staff's projecting that the new ongoing I T contract will be approximately about forty, forty-two thousand in the coming budget year. So moving on to parks and recreation, there was a request to increase the repair and project of park for two thousand. That stayed the same from the first reading. That amends that budget line to twenty-five thousand. And then in the irrigation side of things, there was a request to increase to five thousand, amending that to fifteen thousand. That did not change from the first reading. Moving to number eight, for manor operation salaries, the request did change from the first reading. The request is to transfer twenty-nine, three and amending that budget line item to twenty-three, one hundred. What we've done is went back and pulled a full year's part-time hours and wages for both Walt and Kim. And those numbers come out to equal to what that reduced amount of twenty-nine, three would be for their whole year as a part-time employee. Moving on to number nine. The request was to increase the administration salaries, which is where Walt and Kim were moved to from part-time. And that increase was for thirty-nine, ninety. And that amends that budget to one ninety-eight, four sixty-seven from the approved one thirty, seventy-seven. So that did change from the first reading. The other line that's noted here is the FICA increase. And then we've also added a chart here denoting each of the manor's staff positions and numerically one, two, three, and four for those employees. And there's also notes showing where they were approved as part-time employees, but then the amendment request is for the full-time positions. Moving on to number eleven, this is just the administration for the retirement and the employee insurance for the both. However, the insurance is only for one employee. So one increase for the manor retirement would be an increase to thirty-seven, two eighty-one from the adopted twenty-four, one forty-two. And then for the insurance, there was just this increase for one employee for sixty-one hundred and two dollars. And that was from twenty-five thousand, eight forty-eight to an amended request of thirty-one, nine fifty. These two items for thirteen and fourteen did not change from the first reading. Number thirteen is the transfer from one account, which is C I P, to the recommended account from our accounting firm. And that is just a simple transfer for debt service payments for Blackwood Facilities Corporation. And you can just see that line item was adopted as fifty-eight, seven, two, seven. And the amended would be one point six, forty-three thousand, six nine, six, nine forty-one, I'm sorry. And then the item fourteen, there was some adjustment there due to the manor's administrative adjustments. However, there will still be a total of three hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars added to the contingency or the unallocated fund balance. And a total of ninety-one thousand, nine forty-six was deducted from the contingency as a result of these amendments. So the total amended fund balance would be five eleven, nine, nine, three. And that's an increase from the adopted two seventy-four, nine, seven, one. So that's a fairly quick rundown and recap of where we were from the first reading. We're here for any questions from council. That's all I have, Mister Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for that update and run-through. Before I ask council for questions or concerns, I do know that one of the positions here that's in question about being defunded. We do have that. It was a request made by that employee to speak to this body during open, during general session. I will ask that individual that contacted me to approach this podium. Mister Robert Kelly, he has been working diligently with Jordan in our media room. I don't know if council has paid attention to that. So far, the changes that were made are astronomical in cleaning up the transparency of that process. I will give Mister Kelly a moment to address council on his position and his time here before that vote is made to defund his position. Mister Kelly, the mic is yours.
All righty. Well, good evening, everybody. Hope that everyone had a great Christmas. I promise you I will not be before you long. But I do want to address some things that were brought to my attention about my position possibly being terminated. So if you do not know, my name is Robert Kelly, Junior, and I am currently the Director of Multimedia and Communications. If you're not aware, we live in a society where media tells the story of what's going on, whether that is social, whether that is Instagram, Facebook, YouTube, you name it. Media tells the story. Now, as the mayor and as councilmen and women, you all have day jobs. And I'm pretty sure if you had it your way, you would love to be in the light of the community, shaking hands and kissing babies. Am I correct? Yes, no? Yes? All right, cool. Well, if you think about it, social media gives you that element. Whenever the opportunity came to me, it was presented that the mayor and the Town of Blackwood needed an element that would paint the town in a very transparent and a very reachable and approachable light. And so that's why the mayor approached me into becoming a part of the Town of Blackwood staff. And so since I've been a part of the Blackwood staff, it has been my mission and my goal to do just that. And if you do not know, I want to share some light on some of the work that I've done. So when I was hired, I believe maybe three days after it was the Christmas parade. So I went out and I made a short recap reel to promote people to our YouTube page. Currently, our YouTube page sit at three hundred and fifty subscribers. Now, if you know anything about the algorithm, in order to get YouTube subscribers, it is hard. That means you really have to be active and you really have to have a face. When I got here, one of the things that Blackwood did well was you all recorded your meetings very well. But an element that was missing was really putting it in a language that the public possibly could understand. And so what I've done was I created thumbnails that will be intriguing and that will be what we refer as to in the media world as clickbait to increase traffic towards our YouTube page. So if you go back and look at our YouTube page, what I've done is I've organized our YouTube page in playlists so that way when our local citizens go to our YouTube page, they can find out exactly what they're looking for. Beforehand, it was just videos. And one thing that we have to understand is that whenever people are on social media and they are looking for a specific task, ten times, you only have five seconds to grab their attention. You only have five seconds to grab their attention. I'm gonna say that again. And so by creating those playlists and by adding those thumbnails, what I have done is I have really made it easier for our local citizens to go in and access exactly what's going on. Not only that, but since working, I have had the opportunity of taking part in our Santa Land event, which I have taken pictures for the local community so that way they can create Christmas cards for next year or this upcoming year to share with their family members, which the public really enjoy. And one of the feedback that we received was we wish this, we wish this particular event was marketed more. I don't know how many of you all have children at this moment, but if you do, think about this. Whenever you go to the mall, the Santa experience is pretty crowded. But what you all put together here was y'all gave the opportunity for Blackwood residents to come in and take pictures to where it's a very intimate space. That went well, actually. It went very well. Not only that, but if you take a look at the last past social media post, it has given us a more professional light, not only within the local community, but beyond Blackwood. And so what I am, what my role is to do is to make the Town of Blackwood not only accessible through social media, but to tell the story of Town of Blackwood. Blackwood is full of history, rich history at that. And the best way to tell that story is through social media. Now, what I'm gonna say here, it is a very bold statement and I want you all to hear my heart. I am a young minority male trying to make ends meet for me and my family. I am a newly met, well, me and my wife just celebrated a year's marriage. And only thing I'm trying to do is come to work, make ends meet for me and my wife so that way we can have a roof over my head, over our head, I'm sorry. And if this position is terminated, that puts me back in the job market. And if you're not aware, the job market is pretty scarce. It is very scarce at the moment. Now, I have the necessary credentials to do what the job description is asking me to do. My undergraduate degree is in mass communication and media studies, which I earned from the accredited university, Lander University in Greenwood, South Carolina. So I am well-qualified to do my job. And I'm asking for your grace and for your mercy that this position is not terminated, not just because it allowed me to pay my bills, but this position will allow the Town of Blackwood to evolve. When I moved here two years ago, and what the Blackwood was then, it has grown tremendously. And if you do not have social media on your side, you won't be able to keep up with the times. I encourage you to go out and take a look at Greenville's social media, Goose Creek Social Media, or even the Town of Florence and see how the storytelling of, that their social media department is putting out is really not only helping tourism, but it's also helping their local businesses. With Blackwood being a town that really relies heavily on hashtags, let's use social media to our advantage to really tell the story of Blackwood so people will willingly come here. Social media is a free tool. It is a free tool to tell people your story. So why would you want to get rid of that position? If I may ask, is the money not in the budget? Like, what is necessarily going on? And since I've been working with Jordan, we have been able to do a lot of great things, such as take action pictures of the fence being repaired, action pictures of the playground being repaired. We have been able to do a lot of great things. And this is just the beginning. One of the goals is to drive more engagement to town meetings. But how can you do that? By eliminating a vital position, such as the multimedia and communications position. It is vital. We have to look at five years from now. I know it's new. I know that media is something that everyone don't understand, but I can guarantee you that it is a necessity. So I am asking for your mercy that whenever you all go into your executive council that you consider these things. Because what we do not want to do is we do not want to fall behind the eight ball as a town and play catch-up. We do not want to fall behind the eight ball. As of now, from the recent social media post, we have gotten great engagement from people beyond Blackwood. So in my closing remarks, I'm asking you that you really take time to think about what terminating this position can do. Do you want Blackwood to be behind the eight ball? Or do you want to move Blackwood forward? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'll pause for a second. Questions for Mister Kelly from council. All right. Hearing none. Thank you, sir. All right, council. You have been presented with the presentation from our town administrator. You have heard from our employee, social media, and our media department. Any questions for Mister Steins?
Uh, Mister Mayor, if I may?
Yes, sir.
From, I'm trying to follow from first reading to second reading where the changes were. And I know we went through that pretty quickly. But can you give me the numbers that? We have one through fourteen, I think. Can you give me the numbers that the amounts change? Outside of number one, I followed that unless somebody else on council has a question about number one. What other numbers did the?
Well, it would be number nine for the manor administration salaries. That number certainly changed. I'm trying to think.
Oh, I got you. I got the first one. The increase went from a requested fifteen to a requested thirty-nine, ninety.
That sounds about right. And then that transfer went from, I believe, which is number eight, from, I want to say around ten.
It went from, yes, sir. It was ten in first reading?
Yeah, to twenty-nine, three.
Okay. Yep, I'm following that.
Yep, to, yeah.
And fourteen was a created number because we didn't have that at first reading? You just added fourteen as the contingency balance, correct?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. That's all I had, Mister Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman McKendrick. Any other questions for Administrator Steins from council?
Mister Mayor, if I may?
Councilwoman Frill?
If I may. No questions for the administrative. But I just feel the need to say this. We're here tonight. I don't think that we should be, but we are. And we're here because I think this is the opportunity for this council to hold the mayor accountable. We, I think it was this week, got a position justification. Had we gotten that prior to some of the decisions that were made, we may or may not even be here. You know, the mayor has what I call the bully pulpit. He gets to set the narrative. He gets to have press releases put in the paper that bash the council for what I believe are his actions. I hate that, you know, there are people being placed in situations, but I don't know that this council is to blame for that. I don't think that. You know, I think this mayor has operated as an administration of one. And if this is the manner, the only manner, that we have to put some checks and balances in place, then unfortunately, there are. then unfortunately, there are going to be some damage to people. I hate that. I hate that. But what I hate more is I hate that the narrative that's being put out is this council somehow is doing things to damage people's reputations and, and things like that. Mr. Mayor, you did that. You did that. And, you know, with all due respect, I have told you several times, you are hell-bent on proving that you are the strong mayor in an already strong mayor form of government. You operate as though you have no counsel. You send almost threatening emails to us, mandatory emails. You know, we don't work for you. We are not staff. And, you know, you send communications, very canned communications, and like I said to you, your commuter, whoever's writing your communications, they're writing them or you're writing them as though they are to be read by someone other than the intended recipient. You talk about us playing politics, you're playing politics, and you're affecting these people's livelihoods. That's really all I have to say moving forward. I just hate that council is put in this position. Because I think had things been done a little differently, we may not be here. I yield, that's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments or concerns from members of council?
Hearing none. Before I ask for a vote on this subject matter, what I hate is the notion that this council feels, or some members of this council, I can't put everybody in that, it wouldn't be, wouldn't be fair to assume that a bully pulpit. One thing I think that is, you, ma'am, would spend some time talking to folks in the community. I never used this position as a leverage. I never used this position as a bully. I know what a bully pulpit looks like, and that is not what you've got here. But if you feel that way, then I feel bad for you. One thing to add to that is, yes, I have to monitor the communications. When claims are made that someone is not communicating, I say it to you and others in the executive session, if you have a question, you pick up the phone and call someone. What I can't do is play a genie and guess that you have a question for me and pick up the phone and call you. There's a lot of moving pieces in this town every day. And one thing I have done with this staff, and I don't think you'll find any member on this staff that would say the mayor hasn't been fair, the mayor has been a bully, or the mayor hasn't given me the opportunity to flourish in my position, or to hear me out. That is wrong. And we need to make sure that that narrative is not painted. I appreciate this staff. One thing I do every day when I've come to the building at town hall is I make it my mission to speak to everyone in that building. Employees, visitors, it doesn't matter. I purposely, before I walk in my office, go and speak to everyone. And it is genuine. It's how you doing? How's your day? Things that I remember that happened the day before, the week before. How's that going? I constantly do that. I care about this town. I care about this staff. And one thing in leadership that leadership has taught me from the beginning of my career, you will not be perfect. I don't care who sits in the position. You will not be perfect. And if communication using the words mandatory meeting stumps you, it makes you feel some type of way, then this might not be the, the calling for you. Because I am sure, I get mandatory emails every day, mandatory be on this call, sir. This is mandatory for you to participate on my day job. And I never have taken offense to that. I know that that is something important that I need to participate in. And if I feel it's not, then that's for me to have a conversation with my supervisor to say, hey, you kind of wasted my time, but that's not in the public. I check, I sent the emails, I sent the text messages. That message you're talking about, saying mandatory was in response to the ongoing that the mayor doesn't communicate. If I don't have something to communicate to you about, and you feel that you have heard something, pick up the phone and call me. Everybody else in this town will pick up the phone and call me. No matter where I'm at, they will call me, and they get an answer. Even if I answer and say, hey, I'll call you back. Give me a few minutes. I'm wrapping up something. I do my best to call people right back and give them an answer. It may not be the one they want, but they get a call back. So we need to be careful, ma'am, on how we put things out, because just as you put that out, I've heard some things, and I'm not gonna address it in this that is very frightening. And if we're gonna make claims of so-called... If we're gonna make certain claims, we need to make, make sure you have the proof of that. I asked for AG opinion on our form of government. Not just to put that up in your face. I asked for that so that I know from the legal authority in the state exactly what this is. I can go and talk to former mayors and get the scoop, as I don't mind doing that. I can talk to other mayors in the state in the same form of government. Sloan Griffin does not make decisions without talking to other people that have been in the position or currently in the position. I love this town. I love the state of South Carolina. And I enjoy being able to go and ask those questions. I was sitting in the Waffle House earlier, just listening to people talk about how wonderful this town is, and I smiled. I didn't tell them, oh, I'm the mayor. I just smiled, ate my breakfast, and walked out. That is not who you've got sitting in this seat, somebody that parades around. I've heard the comments you've made to me several times. But show me one light of me parading around this town, and we can talk. But I'm gonna say this as stern as stern can be. The comments I have heard that have come from you to some citizens in this community, get your facts straight. Because the mayor does not touch any money in this town. At this point in time, I'll be looking for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, before you, let me say, I don't know what you're talking about in terms of any money that you're touching. So I would just say, maybe it's you who need to get your facts straight, because I don't even know what you're talking about in terms of... Because anything that I have said, I've said to you. I don't even have an issue with you in terms of money. So I don't even know what you're talking about with regard to that. And so getting my facts straight, I don't even know what you're, you're talking about. You may want to go back to whoever told you that I have an issue with you and some money that you're touching. I don't even know what that, that's about. I don't, I don't even know. I don't even know who could possibly have said anything, but that's not my concern. But you might want to talk to whoever that is.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll be looking for...
Mr. Mayor, if I may, we just need to read, uh, we need to read the ordinance section before we...
I will. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right, council, you have a second reading for the ordinance twenty-two-four-point-zero-zero-nine and ordinance to amend twenty-two-four-point-zero-zero-four so as to provide for amendments to the revenue and expenditure appropriations of the general fund, state accommodations tax fund, local accommodations tax fund, hospitality tax fund in the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-five budget. I'll be looking for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt ordinance twenty-two-four-point-zero-zero-nine as read.
Motion made by Councilman McKendrick, looking for a second.
Second.
Second made by Mayor Proton Brock. Any discussion?
Can I just add something for clarification to make sure what documents are going to be attached to the ordinance? Because the ordinance itself is the last page of the, the handout for everyone. I just, and it indicates that the budget shall be amended as described in the attached document. So I just want to make sure that we are all straight on what document will be attached.
Council members, you see this ordinance at the, at the end? We still have a motion and second on the floor? Is these the documents you so wish to attach?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman McKendrick, if you, if you would accept a friendly amendment to your motion to attach the twenty-two-four, twenty-two-five budget amendment, which is signified through pages one through four in our packet, which was presented by the administrator, that would be my recommendation to amend the, the motion.
Yes, sir. I'll accept that friendly amendment.
All right, motion has been amended. Do you accept that as a second?
Of course.
Yes, sir. All right.
Does that cover our basis, Mr. Bassler?
Yes, I think it does. Like I say, I just wanted to make sure we had on record what, what documents were going to be attached to that ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Councilman McKendrick.
I, I'm just... I just want to be very clear as to my understanding, or council's understanding, of what will happen when and if this budget amendment passes. Attorney Valador, if you will try to answer this for me. If we're attaching one through four, pages one through four, which match the budget amendments as outlined in the ordinance, this will take place as of when? The budget will be amended as of the vote?
Yeah, the ordinance, Councilman McKendrick, will go into effect as of second reading. Now, whether there's some lag or something that needs to be caught up based on just payroll and what, you know, some administrative things of that nature, but yes, I mean, the budget amendments will immediately go into effect.
Okay, and I think, I think it's appropriate to kind of ask a couple of questions that are gonna get in the weeds a little bit here, because we, the, the second media specialist that was hired, we have paid him for... Mr. Steins, how many weeks?
We've paid him up to the twenty-seventh, right, Julie?
And we paid him out of ten forty-one twenty-one eighty.
Correct.
So, and, and, Mr. Mayor, council, try, try to follow my question here, because we're going to drive ourselves to a budget shortfall in ten forty-one twenty-one eighty, even after this amendment is passed, because we're trying to codify by position. Are you following me? Because we've paid a position we're gonna eliminate if this passes. We've, that's the only position out of the ones we're discussing that we've actually paid salary to. Correct?
Right. Are, are you concerned we're going to run afoul of that budget by the end of the fiscal year?
We could.
From, as a result of paying up until this point?
Yes.
Julie, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we factor in some contingency on that for what we've paid to date?
Do we know what we've paid to date without being in front of a computer for you?
Well, his start date was December second, if I'm not mistaken, right, Julie? So from the second to now, we're only talking a few thousand, like, three, three or four thousand dollars. Less than five.
And then sec- and, and Ms. Julie, thank you for, we discussed this at first reading, and I see it in the proposed budget amendments where we have... And I'm gonna use the word drilled down for lack of a better term. In those account numbers, zero-one, zero-two, zero-three, I don't know that... Or have we found out if we can do that?
If we could go back?
Nope, from here forward.
We're doing it from here forward.
Okay.
We are doing it.
Okay. And the reason I asked for the drill down in particularly the one-eighty account numbers, that's, that's the salary account numbers, depending on what portion of the budget you're in, is to be candid, to force council communication between the mayor and council. Mr. Mayor, you, you just said that you don't make decisions without talking with folks or people first, which I appreciate. I, I think my pushback on that is you don't talk to your council as a group before you make a decision, which has driven us to the point we are today. Council did not know we were hiring, hiring a social me, a second social media specialist, uh, which is what that position was called in the position justification, but I've I, I've heard a couple other, I mean, I've heard several titles for the position, but in your position justification, it was social media specialist, a second one. So Pete, a question for you. If we pass this ordinance and we've laid out what is to be paid in that budget category, can mayor, the administrator, anybody go around those account numbers?
Probably not, Councilman McKendrick. That's an appropriation issue, and unless money has been appropriated for something, I mean, that's, that's how the money needs to be spent, is how it has been appropriated. So what I'm hearing is if there is a shortfall at the end of the year, there would need to be another budget amendment with two more readings, another public hearing. But, I mean, I not, I'm not telling anyone what to do, but I mean, I think there could be a contingency put in to the budget right now. That would be a proper amendment to the, to the ordinance instead of having a shortfall at the end of the year.
And we're, and we're not top, I, I agree with Administrator Steins. By my numbers, we were talking roughly thirty-three hundred dollars. When I went back and did these numbers prior to the meeting, I think it was thirty-two hundred eighty-four dollars.
Yeah, that, that seems right, and I'm doing some fairly quick math here. I think we've got about sixty-six hundred from the amended based on what we have in this four salaries that are left in the administration. So, so I, I do think we have
Enough.
A, a, enough to carry the fiscal year with those positions.
Okay. And, and Attorney Valador, I was on the same page with you. If we were gonna do it, let's try to get it in the... But if we're, if we've got enough to cover us fine, if we have to have another budget amendment, we can certainly do it. And, and I think you said there's
I don't do, ma'am.
There, there's about seventy-two hundred based on what
There, there's about seventy-two hundred based on what-
Which covers what we have already paid the position.
And we've also left the, um, intern position. So keeping those in mind.
The three part-time interns, seventy-two hundred.
Right, which may not, may or may not happen.
Within this budget year. And then lastly, Mister Mayor, it's, I, I mean, just for you, the, the, a question for you. Is this? Would, if this ordinance passes tonight, are we on the same page? With you as far as staff and, and how we get to new positions and how we get them added to the budget? Which, as we discussed in the last regular state meeting, would be through the budget workshop process?
Councilman McKendrick, to your question, the budget workshop is a standard practice for that. However, the conflict in this is the reason I asked for AG opinion on the other side is to our, and I hate to bring it up because it's a sort, every time I say this, our form of government. Trying to understand our form of government is the reason that I asked for that AG opinion. Not to give me that bully pool pit, not to bolster the position. It is to so that we all can understand, because I'm looking at our ordinances. And I hate to put former Mayor Bailey on the spot, you know, I know he's sitting in the seat. I know two other mayors that are still, um, present that sit in the seat. And seeing how they moved about adding positions in gives me pause. Because in our ordinance, it, it, it states several times about establishment of positions. Section thirty-two point zero one, establishment of positions. And section A of that talks about the following town personnel positions and position titles are hereby established. And it talks about the town administrator, the clerk, the attorney, and the municipal judge, we don't, we doesn't, we don't have. But it also says in part B of that section, the mayor may establish such additional positions as he or she deems necessary to effectively and efficiently carry out his or her duties and responsibilities as chief administrator, officer of the town. You can go on into section thirty-two point zero one, the authority of town council. And the mayor, and it further defines that, when you go down to set, part C of that section, the mayor may appoint persons to the position established by the mayor under section thirty-two point zero one B. And when he or she deems it necessary for the good of the town, suspend or remove such persons from the position. And when I listen to, and not, not saying you, but when I listen to the majority of council, it makes it sound like these positions were just kind of created just to create a job. We need these positions in the town of Blackwood. As we continue to move forward and grow, the plan is always to come back and do these amendments. Just as I did with the manor. The manor positions were created, those full-time slots, and that need, seeing that immediate need to have backup in place, and I'm not going to go into greater detail, that's a personnel piece, but to have some backups clearly put into place immediately, uh, to boost the sales of this manor. And council will see in their report coming soon on how the sales have been drastically increased over here since adding those positions. Um, I know we don't, we don't have that, that AG report back yet. I know that's coming. I know it's the holidays, but, um, I will make that decision when it comes back to budget, um, when I'm drafting the budget with staff. Is there a need to bring positions back up in these manners? We will assess that when we get to that point. So right now, if the removal, um, of one person that's already in place and several, I do know at least one position, HR position, that had been on since the previous administration. This council's seen, um, after appointing an administrator, deputy administrator, that, um, the recourse of that, because it was a disagreement, the recourse of that is to take out all positions. We talk communication. My doors are open. We can have the communication, but as of right now, we'll, we'll stand as it is. If this is what they got, if you all have put in place, we will, um, move according to what you have budgeted. Any other discussion? You have a motion and a second on the floor? That has been amended, um, per couns, um, advisor council advisement. Any further discussion? All right, hearing, uh, Mister Stein's roll call, please, sir.
Yes, Mister Mayor. Erica Page?
Yes.
Donald Brock?
Yes.
Rich McKendrick?
Yes.
Andrea Fred?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
No. Thank you. Yes is have it. Next on the agenda is open citizens comment. Anyone that's present that wish to speak? I'll be looking for a signal.
Mister Mayor?
Hearing none?
Mister Mayor?
Yes, sir, Mayor Proton.
Before we move to adjournment, I'd like to, uh, issue an apology to Keith Bailey for my-
Former Mayor Keith Bailey.
Former Mayor Keith Bailey, for an unprofessional outburst at the last special call meeting. So I apologize, sir.
Thank you for that, sir, because I did see that. So thank you. Yes, sir, former Mayor Keith Bailey.
Good evening. You know, uh, Councilman Brock has demonstrated that, uh, that he is a, a person of character. Because most men don't apologize, much less in public. And it's duly noted to me and accepted your apology. So henceforth, the hatchet is buried. And you're a man of your word. Now, along that, I think that should, hopefully that signals that, you know, that we can get along and move the town forward, as opposed to being dealing with egos and petty, petty stuff, petty things of, of person, of personalities. So hopefully this will be the beacon that we can continue on. Because if you all fail to do what you're supposed to do, then the town will be like it's been for the last ten years or so. Will be, will be a town on pause again. So hopefully, um, from this point forward, we can move forward. And I want you all to enjoy your holidays as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any additional open citizens comment? Hearing none, I'll be looking for, uh, before that, I do want to send a special, um, prayer out to Ms. Sharon Durst, who, um, lost a family member, um, this week. So, uh, please keep her and her family in there in your prayers. With that being said, I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn.
Shall move.
Motion being seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, meeting adjourned. Thank you.